All right, I'm going to call our regular meeting council to order at 6:01 PM. And we'll get started with our Latin adulation statement. The town of Culvers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all Indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. So we'll go right down to the adoption of the previous minutes. So the first one that we have is from August 15th. Are we going to make a motion now?
Can I move to adopt the agenda presented?
Oh, I guess I forgot that part. Sorry, guys, it's been a minute. Yes, you can make that motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you. Any discussions? Call a question, call in favor, that's carried. Okay, now we're going to have minutes. So the August 15th minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion for those?
I'll adopt that motion.
Okay, thank you.
They accept the minutes of our regular meeting council on August 15th.
Excellent, any discussion? Sing them, or call a question, or call in favor, that's carried. And then next, we had the August 22nd committee of the whole meeting minutes. So would you like to make a motion for that? Go ahead.
I move to adopt the August 22nd committee of the whole minutes.
Excellent, any discussion? Call a question, all in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
So we will be having a delegation tonight. Minister Joseph Scow will be joining us, but he won't be here until about 7 o'clock. So we're just going to continue through the agenda if that's okay with everybody. So the first item that we have here for our staff report is the dam report. So you all have this in your council package. And I'm just going to ask if there's any question for council regarding this report and maybe get some clarification from administration if there is any. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm happy to see the report included as part of our council package. It's something that we've asked for, so it's awesome to see. I do think that it's a little bit maybe vague on the information side. But I was wondering, paragraph one refers to concerns key non-the wind fires. And I was wondering if Chris would be able to expand on that a little bit more and how it has affected course or has affected course and will continue to in the future, right? And then as well, I'm curious about the reference to the Alberta Emergency Management Agency and what other communities are planning. So is this referring to the regional emergency plans or our own emergency plans? And then what is the status of our emergency plan?
So... Well, start at the beginning, I guess. His note about corresponding with Charity Schweitzer is just in regards to dam courses and what, as he says, what other communities are planning. But at the time he wrote this, he was unaware of a meeting that we'd have tomorrow. It was tomorrow. It was a regional group in regards to a grant that the city of Lethbridge sponsored to essentially sponsor a regional emergency disaster... modern disaster for emergency planning purposes. So we'll be covering that off. We already know the topic will be a regional blackout. The challenges that would ensue with that. So we'll be meeting on more details tomorrow once we've got a chance to go through that. The city got a grant for over $3,000 for that. So that would be our first chance to really kind of sit with those regional people. Lethbridge is not part of our regional dam program. It's still good that we are here in contact and sharing those resources, contacts, etc. So the spark of emergency management plan goes. It has been updated in terms of contacts with a couple of changes about to happen. And the body of the document has not been edited to date. I have instructions to have an emergency management committee meeting in September, which we'll be following. I've gone through the document a little bit, but I will also say I've probably only gotten page 60. So I haven't fully reviewed it, I agree. And I want to be in a conversation with Charity and the people from AEMA to see if there's any updates that we need to be including in this plan. I also want to point out, however, that we have scored requests or proposals on the regional program. And a group was selected. I don't want to divulge it because I'm not sure if they've been contacted yet. And part of that program is actually doing an entire regional emergency management plan with dependencies for each municipality. So that may supplant our actual emergency management plan as well. That is our anticipation. So I don't think we want to spend a ton of time on it. The only concern at this moment is that all the information in terms of contact points is up to date in that document and that our staff have access to it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah. It answers it. Because I guess then what it's talking about here is more just what he's doing rather than our plan in general. And yeah, no, I appreciate everything else. With, can I ask another question? So just with the training that's happening then, so it's an exercise that we're required to do. Does that help us meet our requirements then?
No, well, yes, it will. Like, we're not required to do this particular one. This is voluntary, right? And had it been in three weeks or a month, it would probably decline. So I have, we don't even have people in specific positions that know this position profile yet. So we've got some work to do on the emergency side of things. But yes, also with the regional proposal, there's a full-blown live emergency run in there as well as three tabletops. So over the next 12 months, you're going to get a lot of emergency management tests. So that must be very good, I think. And I think we'll be impaired, but one of those is involving potential RCO grass fires because that's obviously a great concern.
Can I just ask that question with that component? So the last time that there was a... What do we call, what do we call those things?
A disaster exercise.
Yeah, like an exercise. We were actually unaware of it. But it was happening, wasn't it? Our community was actually the situation.
The center of the earth, right?
Yeah, we were the, where the disaster was. And we were unaware of it. And so I guess that when this does happen, I guess I'd be curious to know, like, our role as council with all that, like, so that we're in the whip too in terms of what that looks like. I know that Arcade, when he was here, he gave us these little cards. You remember those little cards? About crossing the line or something like that? And so like, just knowing like all of that information, right? We were just kind of left in the dark a little the last time, like, what happens.
What I asked him to do, I asked Chris to do last week. He brought me a framework for an incident, essentially an incident command process that was fairly large scale. And I asked him to go back to Alberta Emergency Management and have them provide a template for a smaller structure for a smaller municipality. We didn't have enough people, all of our staff members and all of our council members and their spouses to fill that particular piece. So to me, that wasn't a lot of help. And I know that they do have smaller structures. And I'm certainly happy to borrow and their views in the past. But it's always good if AEMA is involved in and us being closer to this, even if we're at points where we're struggling a little bit. They need to know that as well. And they've always been very good in the past in providing whatever assistance we need. And they'll come in and do tabletops with us as well. The key piece is what is your role? Right? And because of a small staff, council members will from time to time have a role.
Yeah.
Even if it's communications or whatever the case may be, right? So, yeah, so hopefully we can get that all vetted out in the next few months. And in 2024, I know there's multiple plans for tabletops and actual emergency exercises.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry, just one more question. Thank you. So with the relation, with the situation that's kind of being described in paragraph two with the train car, at what point would the local emergency response team be activated? Just because that could have potentially been a thing where we needed to activate our local response team, right? And I know it's, we don't have the response team right now, but I guess I'm just curious if this is, if this is something that should be activated or at what point? And then I guess just to add on to that, he talks about Clayton here. And Clayton also has kind of an overseer position and works with multiple municipalities. So I guess what would the relationship be like with him and with Chris and being able to call that and activate the response team?
So it depends when you're referencing this. In the next few months, it's probably a matter of me figuring out if I'm going to actually offer emergency management for support. I would also call that, by the way. Typically, our first call would be to the county, who would be one of our first calls, who have a much more stable emergency management program in place than we do currently. So we'd be pulling in resources very quickly. Obviously, nature needs to be informed and it depends on what the emergency is, right? So now, next year, however, this will be vetted out in our emergency management plan in terms of who calls and what would constitute an emergency. Will constitute a regional emergency that would require additional resources from other municipalities. And at that point, what does the incident command structure look like? Right now, we still have mutual aid agreements in place. And honestly, if something happened right now, it would be a matter of just dedicating people to particular positions. I have some people that are well acquainted with emergency management. Public Works, for instance. We have public members that are well acquainted with it that are involved in our emergency management committee. So I don't want to say I'm not concerned. I would be, I would prefer to be a little more prepared than I happen to be at the moment at this moment. But if something happened, we would deal with it.
Thank you.
But if I have an emergency exercise in town, I'll make sure that you're well aware of it.
Yeah.
It can be a little daunting and scary depending, right? Especially if it's a live exercise, which is planned. So, yeah, it's pretty to think something actually had happened. And especially in the days of social media.
Well, I think even like, like as Mayor said, like, she's the official spokesperson when something like that happens, right? And so to be aware of it and to even have that trained isn't super beneficial.
Yeah, and normally, one of those main positions will be a communication officer, right? So we will just have to dictate who is best filled up a particular position, whether it's staff member, council member. Absolutely, the mayor will have a role in any emergency situation.
Great.
I would be curious to see her card, so.
I still have it.
You still have yours. I have it down. Oh, look at you. You're a visual.
Big card, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I might, as old councilman, I used to train.
Yes, yes. And the...
Because you're hired.
All right, if there's...
Do you find, right, that you know what the task is that you resign?
Just the ability to get in and out of town without any questions being asked.
That's kind of what we're told, so.
Well, I think a true state of emergency is not very different than essentially localized emergency law rates, so.
And I think typically those are great, because in the past, all council would come together during a state of emergency and...
And it depends, each town has a different protocol when it comes to calling it an SOL, right? Some American call it, some it's administrative, some it's the entire council. It just depends.
I was always wondering about that, why all councils would sit in council chambers together through a voice of emergency.
Some places don't like it when that happens. Depends on the emergency, especially here. There's a train derailment here, for instance. I don't want you all sitting.
No, no, it's a good idea not to.
All right.
Anyway, suffice to say, we have some work to do. But that work is certainly progressing.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question with regards to, I think you were talking about the regional proposal and having an appendix for each community for their local plan. Would there be any way to say we're kind of hurting for that right now? So can we prioritize ourselves in a sense?
That's a good question, councilor, I can certainly ask.
Because I think regionally, if there are some people that are underprepared, it probably makes more sense to get them prepared first so that everyone's kind of at that state of self-sufficiency if something's bad.
That's a good point, certainly something I could ask, maybe, right?
You know, one of the things that we were trying to do annually is just at least have a tabletop. And we would invite the school in and other community groups so that we could all just have an idea what it would look like, right? In the event that we had to evacuate her.
We'll see what I can come up with on that.
We've been doing that for a long time.
All right, if there's no further questions, can I get a motion to receive the report as information?
Sure. I move to receive the dam report for information.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor? That's carried. So we're going to move right into our request for decision. The first that we have here is the council chamber layout. So we did have a conversation about this at our last committee of the whole and have some options here. Before we get started, is there any questions from any councillor or council?
Do you report?
What?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious, have we heard a final price from that other municipality? Not much yet.
No, and until we decide that's a path we want to go down, there's a little hesitation probably to ask the question. So if we determine that's a viable option for you, it also gives you a bit of a breadth of what a new setup would cost. So I would look at the high end of that and use that as a kind of a figure to custom build. Which is not an option we had in here, but certainly is an option.
All right. Is there any, let's start some discussion or debate. Does anyone like to make a motion or speak to this at all?
I would.
Yes. Thank you.
I'd like to speak in terms of the layout, I guess, more than, and the use of technology out of it right now for this moment. And so, looking at that, I do think shoehorning in this other municipalities, things are perhaps... But perhaps won't, I don't know. To me, it won't feel as purposeful and as intentional, which to me brings professionalism, I guess, really, to the look of our council chambers that I was expecting, I guess, that I would launch for our municipality. So I would like to, I move that we look at some desks or furniture to outfit our council chambers with. I don't have a particular budget in mind for this yet. I think more work needs to be done, administration, on coming up with some furniture options. But I wouldn't, I guess, want to exceed $20,000 for, for the furniture, of course. Hopefully less, of course, so.
Would you be able to restate your motion so that we can get it recorded?
Of course.
Thank you.
If I might, she does have an option in that particular report. It's just a bit of an obfuscation, it says 2022.
Option A you're talking about? Or their new style desks from Staples for this company?
No, the one about...
The, it's not on the...
To explore the custom-made council chamber has really options.
Correct.
Yes, I would, I would like to... Yes, I guess that works. The custom-made could be... But I guess it's not really defined. Yeah, option, option A would be my preferred option.
Just for clarification then, so you're actually looking at the conference-style desks from an office of Flex仗? Is that, that's what you're looking at?
Yes.
So in the proposed motions, it's more so the first proposed motion. Would you say that would be?
Explore options for new conference-style desks. Yes.
Does that work?
That works.
All right, I'll just get you to read that motion. Again, just to make sure that it's reflective of what you like in a minute.
I move that council director of administration should explore options for new conference-style desks and report that back to council with a detailed budget and desk options later than December 16th, 2023.
Excellent. I will now ask if there's any questions.
I guess just that can we go with that option and address the cons that are associated with that option? Because it does sort of state it would not allow for permanently wired technology. And are we looking at wired technology? It's not to do one without some reference to the other. Even if we're just looking at desks right now, we have to be able to look at sort of the style of desk configuration that will accommodate whatever technology we choose to move forward with, right? And for, and reading in that option, you know, the pro is the flexibility to be able to create this or provide the con associated with this is would not allow for permanent wired technology. So I'm not sure, can we work with that option and, and put in like a permanent standing workstation or technology station or?
Sure. Thank you for the question, councillor. With this motion having desk options in place, so we can certainly explore different layout options with the staples desks or different types of desks. So once we have an idea about what direction council wants to go with the style of desk, then follows questions with attrition, with IT, with potential audiovisual, any route that council wants us to go, we find to move the plan and the layouts. And then we'd be able to have a firmer response with exactly what that entails. Our legislative services desk does include a lot of wiring and technology, so most likely to be stationed permanently somewhere where it goes. That will require the input of multiple professionals.
Also, if we go with a wired option for mics or use wired mics, then that is going to, will that be a council, why do you follow that? That's certainly doable.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to councillor Cogel as well. And I, like, I think that is certainly a concern. And I would like to have it integrated as much as we can to, you know, where we locate perhaps just floor boxes that can plug into. Or conversely, I mean, we have the, for example, if we wanted to stay without technology, there is a wire right now currently in the setup that is exposed. And we are in a fixed scenario. And so I don't know that there's completely hiding the wires option, but to try and most of them.
Great. Any questions, discussion?
Thank you. Now, I just have a question to Mayor to admit. With, so is the intent of having this by December 22nd? So it's included as part of our budget 2024 discussions?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I would hopefully have it before that, actually.
Okay.
Technology might be more complicated than the actual part of this particular piece.
Right. And I guess like my comment for this and for the next segment and probably the end after is perhaps it should be as part of the budgeting conversation, as part of the larger picture instead of a one-off. Just so they're like looking at it as part of the bigger picture. And as well, if we do it, if, I know we've talked a lot about, like, one of the things mentioned here is the surplus as a possible funding option or MSI operating as a possible funding option. But we really don't have a policy established for our surplus at this point. So if it was part of the budget discussions, perhaps we could have that policy prior to budget, which I realize is in line two months, so. But anyway, but yeah, I just, that would be my one thing for this and for the next items. It should maybe be part of the budget discussions as opposed to a one-off. And I, and I don't mean one-off as like we're just randomly spending it because I know there is identified funding sources, but, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking at the layout, I'm assuming that we're talking about, is it layout option A? That kind of makes a full circle on that one. My concerns with that would just be when we had the boardroom style table in the middle, it felt very awkward having staff members like over your shoulder the whole time. It felt like we were kind of twisting around and everything there. So I would just want to make sure that there is enough room for people looking comfortable around the circle where it didn't lead to people having somebody directly behind them. I understand with the staff that that might be kind of limited depending on space. And then, I guess, the other concern that I have is I just noticed that we all use a lot of power for a laptop, so there's going to be a lot of cords kind of coming and going with that option. So it's just something to be mindful of.
Any, anything about that? Yes.
There are many, I just wanted to respond to councillor Arum. I think, I think there's lots of, whether you build, whether you build a pre-built desk or buy a desk, they often can come with cable trays built in and ways to connect them together for power. And those desks might be, cost a little bit more money, but... I think the benefit of having a pre-manufactured furniture item would, would allow that ability to potentially reuse the furniture, say if council chambers was to move and needs to be sold or in our own organization. Whereas having like this piece that we have now, it's limiting in the fact that we, like this other municipality, would be struggling to find someone to take it, I guess. So it's, it's, so I think the cord and power can be managed with the right furniture selection and I think it gives us some future flexibility as well.
Um, just, I guess from, from my perspective, because of your profession, I'm trusting you in a lot of things, I suppose. Because like I think that it could, it could, like you said, it could look really good, but it could also look really, really bad too. Right? Like, I think that that's where, you're right, I think it has to be the right furniture selection and it has to meet the needs of what we're wanting to do with this. I agree with you that having people kind of looking over your shoulders isn't the best. That felt kind of weird. Um, especially when we're referring to getting information. And so I didn't really like that. But I do like the, I guess, the ability that this could be reconfigured to better meet different needs, I suppose. But again, I'm not really a furniture consultant or anything like that that knows about what this should actually look like. So I believe that you have more experience than me in this area, so in some ways it might be good to have a little bit of input into like what you think that that furniture could actually be like or what that could look like. Because like the stuff I'm thinking about from staples probably would look really bad.
No, and, and if I comment, like HBI would be a resource potentially, like they do commercial furniture. They have very beautiful layouts of they, they design, they actually design as part of their scope, so. Maybe, I don't know if administration must look at HBI as an context. There's other suppliers out there too who are not just staples, right? I wouldn't trust staples maybe as much as some other companies.
We didn't get deep into that, we were just
I, I need that.
Yeah. The one thing about the square layout that if I might, there, my team is I still think we need to avoid having counselors on either side of the mayor. So she's still going to have to be doing this if we're going to do a new layout so that she can see the entire council without. So it might be an annual approach from the mayor's chair out, that kind of a thing, which I think is probably available as well somewhere.
Great. Any further discussion? Yes.
I guess in, um, Deputy Secretary, so when we talk about doing this as part of budget discussions as opposed to a one off, would you consider taking a friendly amendment so that it is, that's like if Andy says, no later than December sixteen, twenty twenty three? And be part of the twenty twenty four budget deliberations? So we have the information that we need in order to have it as an item for discussion, similar to how we did it last year, where we kind of
Sponsored.
Yeah, talk about every, every budgetary item.
Would that, I, would that slow our process down? Or are we planning that this is going to be a lengthy process that takes us into next year's budget? When we're looking at reconfiguring?
So I guess for me, it's, it's, it's not so much about slowing it down. It's about, it's about looking at it as part of the big budget instead of just an afterthought, right? So it's, we're talking about it as a capital purchase essentially, right? And so should this be something that is included in our budget as part of our budget deliberations? As opposed to just, you know, we have money from this thing that we could use to spend, kind of thing.
Can I just ask, Mike, when do we usually start all that process? Ideally, because I don't think, I think last week we started later. But when would we be actually starting that process?
The budget, budget deliberations in May.
Yeah, yeah.
Soon. Yeah, we'd be starting that soon. Sean or those Mr. Patience and I have conversations about the process and how it go and what that looks like. We should have some further conversations to determine what that looks like for this, this year's round, but not really soon.
Okay. Because then it would be much before December sixteen, then, right? It is part of the process? So in that regard, it wouldn't slow it down at all, it would probably actually be faster.
In May, there's also the option of passing interim budgets by the end of this year and then having further conversations in the same vein where we did this for this year, the bulk of the conversation really happened in March, April. As long as the requirement is that we must pass a budget by the end of the year. But what that budget looks like is, is up to each individual municipality having its look. And then by the time it's time to set up taxes, you want to have that finalized version, that looks like. So it could be a mix and match where if there's an interim budget that's ready by, by the end of December, that can be placed in place for that first bit of the year going forward. And this can be revisited in the winter, spring period to get that finalized, without exactly the play. Depending on the route the council wants to take, would depend on whether, is it an operational budget or a capital budget? Capital budget gets handled differently than the operational budget, where we have the same kind of motions and, and the costs we went through last time. Capital budget is more cautious, but it would be done in the same sort of, same sort of manner.
Um, and I, I guess, if I could, that was sort of my concern is that if we tied this to it, are we going to be having the final budget debates on it in March? Right? Before we move forward with the budget and before with this kind of project. That's.
I may be able to add to that, Mayor Montague, everybody. So Mr. Passy's right. But typically, if we're dealing with capital, we would want to hardwire some of those pieces around the end of December, so if we were looking for tendered projects, for instance, we would want those out in January or February, kind of with the latest. So while we like to deal with the interim budget that way, a lot more emphasis on like getting the capital budget very close to completion by December thirty first and the operational budget to be able to adjust and tweak once we see our final twenty twenty three audit of financials. And we've got some comparables that we can utilize for that, so. What I'm saying, I guess, is a lot of the capital pieces could be approved at that time, where we're still working on the operational budget into March, potentially early April, that means.
So, um, I did hear that there was the proposal for friendly amendment to be part of the budget process? And just wanted to check back in with you after hearing all this information.
Can, can you restate it, please, looking at?
Uh, just to add on to the end, as, as part of the budget twenty twenty four deliberations or discussions.
Yeah, why? This is a, it isn't in process, it would just be clear, like, isn't there technically no friendly amendments? It's not me, because the motion is on the floor, it's not my own motion, I don't want it anymore. Everyone owns the motion, so. Yeah, I can vote against my own motion. It's in terms of process. It isn't, we have the vote on the amendment, just as it was about the motion, I think, isn't that, isn't that the process?
Legislative services.
Yeah, at this time, as per your filing, you can make a friendly amendment to or we can have a motion come forward with, with an amending motion, a severing motion, amendment to motion, which council would have to agree to the amending, to amend the motion with the new words. And then that new motion would come back and we vote on that motion.
So is this considered a friendly amendment then?
If you'd like, because you brought the motion forward and you'd like to change the motion, you can.
Okay.
Or you can.
All right.
Also, the draft.
Yeah, you could.
Oh, I didn't know you did.
It's your, it's your motion, I know, so.
Um, I don't mind accepting the friendly amendment. I, I don't think materially, as you're from administration, it doesn't affect the timing of things. And I, I do like looking at everything in terms of all the expenditures we're planning. So I would accept the friendly amendment.
Great.
If I'm allowed to. Which I'm apparently.
Um, I think that we have it in the budget deliberations, it's a good idea, even if we don't have the final details of what the furniture will be like, we can at least set aside some money to a certain amount. And then kind of finalize it after that, so I don't see any issues with having that added in there. I think it's very beneficial to have it added in.
Excellent. All right, so we've, we've updated the, the motion. Can I just get you to read, to read out the motion?
Uh, I move that council director administration to explore options for new conference style desks and report back to council with a detailed budget and desk options no later than December sixteen, twenty twenty three, to include in the twenty twenty four budget deliberations.
Great. Um, I'm then now going to call a question. All in favor? Opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Right, we're going to move on now to the council chamber's technology component. So again, we have had a conversation about this. I, I, is there any questions from council? We'll go to that first from the information that was provided. Okay, I did have a question, CAO. The other day when we were in our agenda setting committee, I did ask you how much we've spent or if we were able to figure out how much we've spent on this over the past, since the, I guess, the last change of, the major changes that happened to your, the structures.
I can fill that in with some air. From, the, the majority of the projects was done in twenty twenty one using the most transfer, which was a transfer from the personal government during COVID to help deal with transitional things and dealing with organizations in workplaces that needed to have COVID precautions set in place. But also kind of for the organization to use as needed. And so one of those uses was to upgrade the chamber. In that year, as far as what's currently here, there was about thirty two thousand dollars spent. And that ranges from the table to projectors, the other equipment, various equipment around the room, permits for electrical chairs, laptops and things of that nature. And then this year, we've spent about thirty eight hundred dollars in, in configuring, reconfiguring it for streaming purposes to streamline the process of being able to run it better and, and improving the equipment a little bit. Sorry, I haven't included the owls, that'd be other portion on top of that. So more like fifty two hundred dollars this year to, to get it placed. So total of, if I add that little bit in, around, around thirty eight thousand dollars total. So of that, thirty two thousand was from that most transfer, was the town got from the province. And then maybe that fifty two hundred or so was funded through the towns' funds.
Do you know of that, like thirty eight thousand, how much of that was technology?
The thirty two, which is not stuff done this year, is sixty eight hundred.
Of the thirty two?
Of the thirty two.
So we're at like eleven, almost twelve thousand, I guess.
The ta, table was about twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand of the thirty eight thousand?
Yeah, of, of everything, it was due, the table itself was twenty thousand.
This table?
Correct.
So that's twenty eight thousand dollars, like that's been kind of spent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then there's, there's certain costs that are ongoing costs, like that are, like the actual work that's been done here is reusable going forward. The chairs are reusable going forward. The laptops to get things set up, that's things that are, costs that are beneficial to whatever the makeup of the room is.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item thus far? You know that?
Oh, sorry.
Where you, where you do make a motion?
I'm doing a motion, yeah. Okay, so I move that council director to mint a shortlist and invite pre-qualified companies to provide costing proposals for the supply, delivery and installation of new council chambers' audio and visual equipment no later than December fifteen, twenty twenty three, similar to the previous motion, to be included in the twenty twenty four budget deliberations.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on this item? Go ahead.
In terms of providing a shortlist, or sorry, an invitation for costing and proposals on all these supply and delivery, all these equipment, does adminis, would, I guess, my question is if administration would be creating those terms of reference or to have, make it a fair process, I guess, for these companies to bid on if they have ability to put that together, really, is my question. Administration.
I believe we would, if I might, through, through the mayor, I believe we would keep that description fairly basic and not specific in terms of what exact type of equipment we'd be looking for. Because honestly, that would exceed our field of expertise to a great degree. So I think the idea would be to suggest that we have council chambers that be performing virtual meetings, we have our own insight screens. And we need a system that would provide easy access for legislative services for streaming, that kind of a thing. And then leave it up to them to specify whatever equipment they believe would suit the job and hopefully it'd cease some of that. In today's world, we should be able to pull up council meetings from somewhere else potentially that will make service and see what that quality looks like. And maybe talk to their counselors and see how effective it is. There's no perfect way to do this one, unfortunately. It's, I guess, if we were experts, we could save them on this, this and this and this. But we would be taking that advice from somebody else. And as you're well aware, every company deals with different suppliers. So you don't get an apples and apples comparison in any case. So I would think we would leave that description vague, but basically major.
I, I I do think like that gives, that gives us room to find a cost effective option, I guess. But I also see the other side of that in that when we're going to these suppliers, you know, some, yeah, like I, I still see that gray, gray areas and gray areas saying, well, owl does what you need based on those list requirements. Like, we were debating if that's enough or not enough, and this just being the streaming needs to be figured out, right? So but maybe not, I don't know, that's just some thoughts in my head, really. I don't, I don't think, like, I think uh, it would be good to hear what other people have said, what have, what other people would like to, would like to see in this really, is what I think this gives us the option for it.
Thank you. Um, I think that leaving it vague and just kind of, these are what we'd like to see out of the system is a great idea because you never know what you're going to come back with. Somebody might have a Cadillac, somebody might have a Corolla, you never know. But I think that if it's vague, we can see what people offer, that would be people who know that would say, okay, this might fit what you're doing. I really would like to see if we could get some examples of the systems and how they operate, so we can see what it's like from the public's perspective on what we're purchasing. Because at the end of the day, we're trying to be transparent to the public, so it really comes down to, for me, what that experience is going to be like for them. So I think the examples and just references would be a huge thing on my part if I was looking at trying if I was looking at trying to figure out which one might be the best option.
Thank you. Any other discussion? You haven't spoken yet, would you like to speak or do you have a question?
No, no, I'm good with this.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak a little bit more to my motion because as indicated in the court, there are a few different funding options for what we're talking about here. But as I mentioned earlier, if we go with the December sixteenth date, try to get some more options and include it in our budget deliberations, it might be able to get, might give us enough time to hold together two important pieces, which is the procurement policy. And then again, the policy to deal with any so-called we may have at the end of the year, which was another funding source that was indicated. And I agree, I don't think our current technology is horrible and it certainly is a lot better than it used to be, thanks to admin and to Courtney, who's been working very hard at that. But I do agree that we should invest the appropriate funds to do things correctly and continue on our path to increased engagement, which is a huge primary strategic fund. I am very cognizant of the fact that any dollar we spend is a dollar we can't spend elsewhere. And that's why I think it's important to look at it as part of budget deliberations and as part of the bigger picture. And I suppose for me, when it comes to picking the provider, whether it be a matrix or another company, like I don't really care who it's used, I just want to make sure the process is there so that if that means tendering it or creating a procurement policy first, if it's a larger amount and following the N W P T A guidelines to ensure we're being equitable. And so, yeah, I guess I don't have a lot to say on like what tech is used, but just that we're being equitable and fair in our processes and including it as sort of like the holistic picture again, as this is a larger item, but it is an item that chases down our strategic plan and it's a tool of engagement.
Okay. So just a couple of things from my perspective. I like this idea of shortlisting and inviting pre-qualified companies because I think that, like, when you put an RFP up there, like you could get somebody who does this on the side in their garage, right? And so like, I think that knowing what those companies could be or that others have used would probably, would cut down on people that wouldn't be suitable necessarily to the murder of ending up with a similar situation we've come up with in the past. I also do really like this idea of including this in the budget deliberations to go along with all the rest of the potential items that we could have there. And so I think this is a great option. Is there any further discussion before we call the question? If there's done, can I actually get you to read out your motion again?
I move that council direct administration to shortlist and invite pre-qualified companies to provide costing proposals for the supply, delivery, and installation of new council chambers' audio and visual equipment options to council no later than December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, to be included in the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations.
Call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, so Minister Scow will be joining us shortly. So I just want to check in to see if we should, should we recess at this point or go into close? Okay, so with Minister Scow coming, we are going to go into closed session. So if I can get a motion to go into closed session, please.
Sure, and that we go into closed session at six fifty-two P M.
Excellent. Any discussion?
Call question?
All in favor? That's carried, thank you.
Sure. Any discussion? Question, all in favor? That's carried. And then can I get a motion for the point?
I typically scroll. I haven't got that memorized yet, so I'll never get it anywhere.
There we go.
Sure. I can make that.
I moved at the discussion and documents of item seven point one remain confidential pursuant to sections twenty one and twenty four and freedom of information protection. Thank you.
Discussion? Question, all in favor? That's carried.
And if we vote on the... It's your open session.
We did, yeah.
I need more coffee.
Okay, so we'll just pick up with our agenda. I believe we're on ten point three. The budget consultation plan. I'll just go back into my agenda here. Okay. All right. Maybe I will turn this over to administration to just go through anything that you would like to highlight and we'll ask for questions to council.
I'll take the question.
Yeah, please. The idea is just to, um, yeah, create a plan for consulting with the residents of town for what the budget will look like over twenty twenty four. At this stage, it's more getting an idea of where they'd like to see the service levels rather than a specific item. What do you think of X, Y, Z? Just get an idea of, uh, consulting them to see where they want to see the town and go and provide funding for. So the first part of the plan will be rolling out a survey engagement. And that would be, they're saying with local services, you know, kind of in recreation, do you want to see more or less? Much more, much less, they're the same. Or what do you want to see for this, was this like much more or less, whatever it may be? Then this can be done in various ways depending on the route that is chosen. Then actually be holding an open house for residents to come and meet with members of council to discuss what that would look like. Some people will not want to do a survey. If it's online, they will want to do it online, they want to do a paper copy. This is an opportunity for them to do so, but also interact with council. And then council can hear directly from residents what they're thinking and then report back with that information to help inform the decisions that they've made. And any results of survey engagement will be provided to council for review and analysis. More information on how to, or what ways to make there's more making. As far as the survey, you kind of touched on consultation tools in previous meetings. There's really different options that can be done. I know I was at here at the last meeting when there was discussion around, um, tools that I had presented previously. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to sit here at that meeting. And one of the points, I believe, was around being able to have a tool that can do engagement in various ways. And so the proposed tool that I had brought forward for information does have other things you can do. With the plan that they had proposed to us, it allows for an unlimited number of surveys throughout the year to do whatever kind of consultation or engagement that town would like to do. They can provide a landing page so that all of the consultations are kept on one page on our website. It can all go through, they can always have those tools available for viewing at later dates. And then it includes one custom engagement, which is what the citizen budget tool is in that it's a little more in-depth, a little more, resources required by the provider to do some backend populated information. But it's a quick process that can be done. That one requires an extra funding. Whereas some we do have some tools that we already paid for that can be done that way. So it depends on what council likes to... This plan in itself is to just have, the plan is reach out through survey in whatever tool that is. And then having an open house and then presenting those results to council is the bones of this project.
Great, thank you. All right, is there any questions? Jess?
Yeah, just with regards to who that was citizen budget. How are we looking at timeline for this year? Is that going to be too tight to kind of roll that out before the budget deliberation processes?
Through mayor to council arguments, it depends. If we go the route of kind of more interim budget, it allows us to extend that consultation, figure it out, and then have those final decisions made once we finalize our budget in the spring. If, it takes a couple of weeks to get it started, to get the information ready for it. And then it needs to run for however much time we want it to run for, a week, two weeks. And then there's, they do produce a report at the end, which can take a week to do. So it's about a five-week tool engagement process. Because this is the first time using local services, it does that at the time. So if we're not concerned about having a completely finalized budget by December thirty first and then are okay with doing an interim budget and then finalize it, then the timeline is much more available, much wider, where we can have that information gathered from council. We're not rushed to have answers and then pull, put together. It allows us to take it at a pace that allows people to participate and not feel rushed either. So yes and no, it depends.
Thank you. Other questions? Jess?
So, I remember this stems from the last time when the citizen budget was approached with council. And the discussion was and the direction I was given was, so this is a tool. What does it look like? How does it fit into the entire public participation process for the budget? So that's what Mr. Bassi has just explained. So this would be a component of it. It wouldn't be an extensive process. It would be essentially a survey process, but with an online survey coupled with an in-person opportunity for surveys for those that are disengaged with technology. And then a public report to council on the results of that process. And then process up to council how it's implicated into actual budget, right?
Great, thank you.
I just have a question. So, yeah, that was me. I was kind of saying like I'd like to see a more good plan around this. But I was just looking at it again and it looks like the maker is Othello. And if that, if, is the budget, I can't remember what it's called, but is budget whatever? Is that one of the only, like one of the multiple tools that they have? Or do you get the entire Othello package as it lives on their website?
You can get, you get, in this one, the idea is they would, they would, the little packages is you get the landing page. You get them, they can do a custom engagement and conversations with them. Like those surveys on their pages are, some of those are developed by the municipality, some of them are developed by them. And so it's, there's multi-function that this product can do. The custom engagement, I reached out and said, hey, what if, like, what if we didn't want to do a citizen budget every year? What if we, and they said, yeah, no problem, we just don't do it and we don't pay for it then either. So the numbers that I gave you previously would be, could be substantially less if we wanted to do, this year we want to do citizen budget and we don't want to do it next year, we don't want to do anything. We just have our surveys, we have just an ongoing smaller annual cost of depending on, maybe twenty hundred dollars, but they'd be willing to work with us if we said, hey, we're actually doing one survey this year. And they came and said, yeah, we can probably bring that down for you. So it is looking like not a ten thousand dollar a year commitment. But if we want, so you could, we could do a citizen budget one year. The next year, hey, we want to do a really in-depth consultation for the web lands and have a robust engagement tool. Then we would pay the engagement fee for that one, that year. But there's not requirement to run a citizen budget every year, not a requirement to run a larger consultation needing the help of their developers. You can just run some surveys and it keeps their same platform, it keeps the same status visually they're listed. It also allows for people to register and then be sent emails when a consultation is happening. If they're, if they want to participate in regularly whenever we have a consultation available, they get an email, hey, another consultation that town's looking for, we want you to participate. So it has those functions. Whereas currently it's just we would put it out on Facebook or on our website and hope people see the post to respond. This would allow for more targeted, people who have responded, we're going to send out an email and invite them to participate again.
Great, thank you. Other, any other questions?
I'm just, sorry, through the mayor, to the director of corporate services. We talked about the possible funding sources in here, so it's again the MSI operating grant. So I just, from that I have two questions. So does the increase in MSI funding, does it need to be allocated in the twenty twenty three year? Or can it be allocated as part of twenty twenty four budget deliberations? I know I've asked previously, but just to clarify again for myself and maybe the public. And when does that increased MSI allocation have to be used by? And then in future years for budgeting years? So this would be a budgetary discussion pretty much year to year because it is an ongoing annual cost unless it's rolled up in the program?
Through mayor to council boards, the MSI operating that we received this year was at the double portion. So we normally receive about ninety six thousand, this year we received a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety something. And so those funds have to be used by the end of twenty twenty four.
Right.
Or they must be sent back. We can, um, we can make sure that they aren't lost. We can make sure we have them, that they're even applied this year on our budget. And we can, there's been talk of kind of carryover reserve for things that weren't done this year, that weren't done next year. It would flow through into surplus to be allocated to different purposes for future years. So even if this money isn't used in this calendar year, we can ensure that we still have access to it. We can use it for operational costs or one-off projects or whatever it may be in the future. I have no, I have no concerns that this money will be lost and sent back. We will make sure that we keep that.
Amazing, okay, thank you. And I think, like just to follow that up, just a comment, because I truly do believe that when we talk about engagement and transparency, I believe this is a good tool. And I agree with the mayor last time when she mentioned kind of a broader tool. This is not my area of expertise. But I truly believe that we set the budget and we set the priorities as council and staff have the budget and, you know, the tools to do what they need to do their job. And so I really see this as an engagement tool to help us carry out the priorities of our strategic plan, which is community engagement. And so I kind of go back and forth on this a little bit because I like to oppose budgetary items because I like to not spend money. But at the same time, I do understand that it costs to have these tools of engagement. And having an identified funding source like the MSI operating grant is also appealing for me. And so, um, that was pretty much it, that was my comments, thank you.
Any other questions? Jess?
If I may, with this package that this company has provided to us, there's the option of where they have their annual ongoing cost that would maybe in the future get rolled into general taxation. It's a very, in the scheme of things, very small, maybe twenty hundred dollars a year. And then it's the opportunity that if we want to run one of these, you know, we want to do a citizen budget this year, we're wanting to do it two years, we want to do it before next term, after next term, before next council term, we can, those can be funded through that operational grant each year or from some kind of one-off funding in that given year. So there's opportunities to that. Or even if you're going to fund it through the MSI operating year to year and say, yeah, we're just not going to have that license continue on. I don't know if you get rid of that license, whether you lose access to the past consultations. I would doubt it, that doesn't seem like a good business model to me, but I don't know. But there's, this is always, even if it's committed into general taxation one year, council, it's council's budget, council can take out. And so it's a year-to-year thing, it's always up to council for how that sits in the budget on an ongoing basis.
So, I was just trying to look it up. How much did we allocate towards this initiative in our twenty twenty three budget?
Toward budget consultation?
Yeah.
Zero.
Okay. So we're having a conversation about how much money we want to spend right now without having to do budget deliberations. Sorry, I'm just actually saying this because I want to point something out that's really important. It's that I think this council is really exceptional at budget deliberations and being very deliberate in our process of how we spend our money. But we also recognize that throughout the year, there's times when we have to, we know that we have access to funds and we want to explore new things. And so sometimes we have to have that little bit of flexibility to be able to do these things. That's why I couldn't find it in our budget preparation for twenty twenty three. Thank you, thank you for that.
Any other questions? I would actually like to move that we approve the plan as detailed on the September fifth, twenty twenty three budget consultation plan RFD. And my reason behind this is because I know what implementation of software is like. I know that it takes a lot of capacity to make it fully operational. And I also know that if you don't have that built in, that it can become a failure very easily from the hop. And then it's not great moving forward. You kind of have one kick at making people like the thing that you want them to use. And I would really like to see, like, an engagement plan as a whole put forward and how this tool can be utilized within it, who's going to own it and how they're going to do that. I'll just use an example of something, like I did this at the university where I rolled out a soft, like I rolled out this program, but we didn't have anyone to keep it going, it died, we tried to revive it multiple times and it just wasn't, it wasn't worth it. Whereas I feel like this year, because we didn't really do a lot of consultation last year, your plan of even doing the survey, the open house, and that this year, I think, is a step in the right direction. I think that, I'm absolutely not adverse to this platform, but I think it needs to, again, part of that larger plan as to how it's going to be fully utilized. Otherwise it just sits there and it doesn't get used. And so that is my reasoning why I would like to make that motion.
We're going to start with this process this year.
Yeah, and I think, I think that that is great, right? Like I know that there's a little bit of cost that goes with survey monkey or whatever survey platform you're going to use, but it's still not at that level. And I think that like with, I would like to see our budget not be pushed back into doing the interim budget and to kind of like getting it done completely before the end of the year like we had kind of hoped. And I think that this would delay that unnecessarily at this point because we could probably glean a lot of similar information and we're doing continuous improvement by year over year. And so that's kind of why I think that like this could be a next year type of I know, right? Or something that we're looking at for the future. Because I think this could be a platform too that could be utilized by the community development director as well. And how else could it be used more broadly, I suppose?
And it might be nice to see the engagement this year to say it's a great investment because people are engaged in the survey monkey and then...
Yes.
Come ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify for funding for this, um if my understanding is correct, we already have a survey software that we can use for this. There's no added cost from that. And then the open house would fall under probably council open houses from our budget from this year. So there'd be no real changes to the funding to accommodate this.
Do we have an increased budget for open houses that would accommodate this? I believe that we did.
Yeah, we did. I had to double check.
But I'm.
The I know it was discussed.
Yeah, I I'm I'm pretty sure that we had some money in there. But even if even so, it would be very small compared to the ten ten thousand dollars.
Sorry, I just have to um ask clarification question about just because so you're going with option one, so the the budget consultation plan. Um it was my understanding that if we approved this budget plan, budget consultation plan, we would move on to the next one to approve the ten thousand dollars for the budget consultation plan. So I just seeking a little bit of clar- clarity, um if you meant to um just accept it as it is kind of thing or to to do this increasing and spend the money?
No, so the way that I'm reading this, I I the way I read that the way that was written in the background is that we would roll out survey engagement um using whatever tool that we currently have in existence. We would also do a an in-person open house and then that information will be provided to us. So there would be no spend this year.
Okay.
We'd be using existing tools.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Did I did I interpret that incorrectly?
That was my intention.
That was your intention? Okay.
I totally agree with you.
Thank you so much.
I'm glad you asked. That was not what I was getting from that, so.
Okay, okay.
That makes reference was always to citizen budget, so.
That and I and I and I I'm not trying to sell citizen.
To work with them outside.
I'm trying to make you aware of this of something.
Yes.
Um but uh uh but I I'm 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 happy to do the 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 revision in with whichever tool I have.
Okay.
But it's I'm not, I'm not sitting here like, darn, this should have. That's why I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sitting here peeved about any of this.
Okay, um so then to to clarify, like so the plan, the plan that I'm saying is like I I don't, I don't particularly care whatever engagement tool you want to use, whether it's Survey Monkey or it's uh forums or whatever. I'm just saying not to make this spend. It is, I guess, is that reflected in this motion?
No.
It's just referencing the survey engagement to not allocating more money though.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, how can I make this a little more clear then?
And then for myself, like when I ask a question, I I just I I kind of thought they were chronological order. And so maybe that's why I got a little caught up in that. So I mean, to me, this looks clear, but it, I mean.
Yes.
I think I think maybe the the miscommunication was coming from my different numbers, my options. Whereas in some of these other R F Ds I have something, they're using bullet points.
Okay.
So so I could see the it it there, the options are meant as as unique and distinct options.
Okay.
So not not an order of operations of of motions to approve.
Okay. Come ahead.
Um my personal thoughts are if we don't have a dollar figure associated with that, it would speak to me as an administration is gonna try to do that for budget that they already have available.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question on that if I if I. So do we know, and I guess through the merit to administration, um do you feel that you have the resources to to do this with the current stuff we currently have in place like Survey Monkey and that you that this will still work and will have success with it?
To the mayor and the council, I believe I have the resources to to accomplish this.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Um can we not, can we not call it Plan A? Because I don't think that there was any other plans. I think, wasn't there just Plan?
That would be a.
Like I think it's just the budget consultation plan as presented in number one.
Oh, that's presented. That's presented. I would just leave.
As presented, okay. Okay, thank you. So I'll straighten it right again. So I move that council per the budget consultation plan as presented. As presented, we'll we'll leave it at that. Um any any further discussion? Done. All a question, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Is there, do you need, is there clarification needed? Or all good? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so we're just gonna move on then now to um council reports. Um I will start and just highlight a few things for you. Um first of all, Minor Days was great this year. Um again, extended my appreciation to the staff and and the volunteers that that put that together. It was a really great weekend. Um you can see on there the meetings and events that I have attended. The one additional thing that I wanted to add to this is that I will be attending the elected official educations program um session on uh having good meetings. I can't remember what it's actually called, but I'll be attending that before the um the Alberta municipalities convention that will be happening. And if anyone has any questions for me. Oh, I also completed the G B A plus course um that was offered through the Federation of Community Municipalities. Um quite in quite interesting. If you haven't had the opportunity to look into G B A plus, um I do recommend it because it does look at basically using different lenses when you're making decisions and using gender as one of the factors, but um also using um an intersection intersectional approach to how you make decisions. So I did send out some resources to council that I believe as well. Yeah, um if there's no questions, we will move on to the upcoming report. Read it for.
Thank you, Marantina. Um thanks for everyone for uh making mineers days special this year. Um especially all the volunteers and I think I listed everyone but except for the politicians. So I put together, well, thank everyone. Um if you read the agenda ahead of time, you would have seen that the youth crew was doing the giveaway on Saturday. I don't know how well it went in the tent, but um I wanted to uh recognize them for their efforts in doing that. And of course, the town staff was supporting that. Um meetings and events I attended, I I didn't put minors days on here, but I attended all those events and meetings always. It's been a while since I recorded, so I had to go back because I missed the August meetings. So it's uh very few meetings since I was listed last day to report. Um and then the upcoming meetings, um I have Mr. below. Um yeah, so is any questions or comments?
There's none. We'll move to council records.
Thank you, mayor. Um just want to echo the sentiments about helping everyone that helped with minor states success. It was absolutely fantastic. Lots of good feedback from that. Um I guess your meetings attended just committee of all minors days, which I hope was awesome. We also had the sub-pro executive meeting. So um we have quarterly meeting coming up in September, so there's a little bit of discussion with that. And then we're also discussing the provincial government's moratorium on the effects of the power project that Selkirk was working on. So what we've heard right now is we're still encouraged to submit the application for the project and then um there's no timeline for the triple application. What this project is for those that aren't aware is they're looking at using some brownfield space to create a solar project to help fund the Rida through like for sustainability. So the space would be um just kind of looking at a a way to make it more self-sufficient and add a lot more options for the Rida moving forward. Because right now, the current government funding is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year and it should be um quite helpful to keep that going and being able to expand on what we're doing. Um just upcoming meetings and events, something that I really wanted to um make note of is the community crime prevention information session on September twelve. I think that that's gonna be great. As we all know, that there is a lot of community members that are concerned about crime in the community. So if more people share it and show up, I think that's gonna be fantastic. And that's about it for my update.
Thank you. Um if there's no questions, we will move on to councillor Lawrence, I believe. Right?
Yes.
Thank you. I um it yeah, it's I guess at the last meeting I missed a report, so I didn't include some of the previous meetings to the 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 regular meeting on August fifteen. Um but I I I just wanted to um give a big shout out to the staff and teachers at the Cores High School, the Cores Elementary School as they get started for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And I for one was happy to send my kids off today, so um I'm gonna have to deal with them tomorrow for this date of entry, but it's fine. Everything's fine. Um so we a few um big meetings coming up in September. It's getting busy again, which is really exciting. Um it's good to get back into routine and get back into um regular monthly meetings or bi-monthly meetings as they go. Um so I have um community futures coming up as well as the Highway three twenty eight Development Association. Um as well, um when mayor mentioned it, it reminded me. So I have also registered for an E O E P course, but it's just virtual. Um and as well, completed the G B A plus course um just like a minute before it ended. So um I'm happy to have that done. Um and then as we talked about, um we are going, the council is going to the Alberta municipalities con- convention coming at the end of September. Um so this is a really great opportunity for council to um to advocate my for Coors on a provincial and regional level and um and just a really good, great opportunity to um deal with, to speak to any issues our town is dealing with. Um so we're very excited for that. And that is it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um if there's no questions, we'll go to councillor Koppel.
Thank you. Thank you. Um I think it's pretty much uh across the board that we are all uh really grateful to everybody who put on an exceptional minors days. Um I want to give a huge shout out and I'm hoping that we can include that in our minutes. Um I was trying to remember the name of the place that came out and uh helped with Pancake Breakfast, the South Country Co-op. Those guys just did incredible. Everywhere I turned, there was somebody there. And every time I turned around to try to do some work, there was somebody there already doing it. And I met a wonderful woman from town and her two daughters that actually work for South Country Co-op. So it was really, it was really cool seeing that as well. Um but also just all of our community members, our businesses and our neighbors for joining us. Um it what a great, what a great day. Um I think we stopped counting at over five hundred people that came up to the pancake breakfast. So um that's such a good turnout. Um and you know what? And a big shout out to all of our exceptional volunteers. Um and guest pancake servers and M L A Rachel Thomas and our M P. Sorry, I turned those around. Our M P Rachel Thomas and our M L A Josephka and uh thanking them for coming out. Oops. That's what happens when you cough in pace, I think. I was doing it from one to the next. Um but uh what have I um attended? On August fifteenth, M S D A council committee, the whole recalcature. And then, of course, they did um a ten minors day, the Pancake Breakfast parade party in the park. They were all fantastic. As I have said probably dozens of times since. And then this morning, an M S D A meeting. Um over the next little bit, I just put uh some of the stuff that we're going to be doing. Um uh going to throw our proposals for recreation master plan, options for the community development crime prevention on September twelfth. Um and looking at our useful development plan updates coming up. And um I have a number of other uh meetings. September has just been a little bit chaotic, so I'll be adding those in as we speak as we go.
Thank you. Um and can I request a motion to um receive the report as presented? All the council reports is.
Sure. I move to receive the council reports for any motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, so we'll move down to correspondence. Uh we do have two pieces of correspondence. Um unless anybody would like to speak about any of them, um can I get a motion to approve them as a joint?
I think that we accept the correspondence as um presented.
Okay, um any discussion? All a question, all in favor? That's carried. And then finally, we are going to go back into closed session. Um so can I get a motion for that at eight twenty-two P M?
I move to close session at eight twenty-two P M.
Excellent. Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor?
Question before this?
Yes.
Did we want to vote to accept that we think should be ahead now? Because we have thirty-seven minutes.
Do you think that we'll need more than thirty-seven minutes for closed session?
This is just for safe information.
I think we can do it, so we're not gonna do it. Uh call the question, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
I move that we return to open session at 9:22 PM.
Thank you. Any discussion or... No question, all in favor? Let's carry. And then can I get a motion for the, um, FOI stuff?
I'm that the discussions and documents item, uh, 15.1, 15.2, and 15.3 remain confidential pursuant to section 21 and 24 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Any discussion, all in question, all in favor, let's carry. And then finally a motion to adjourn, please.
I approve that we adjourn at 9:00 PM.
So, any discussion, all in question, all in favor, let's carry.